Good evening and welcome to the September 1st Lone Tree City Council Study Session. In support of social distancing requirements and based on space limitations of our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials. And will continue to provide access to public meetings via electronic participation for members of the public who would like to participate. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and within six feet of another person. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey before entering the meeting. The city council does not vote during study sessions since our presentations are for information only. Therefore, there will be no public comment during our study session. So again, let's start this afternoon with a discussion on the variance to setback standards and accessory dwelling unit provisions in the Ridgegate East Village SubArea Plan. Kelly First, Community Development Director, presenting in person. Good afternoon, Kelly.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Apologies for the long title of that.
That's my tongue exercises, my warm-up.
Hey, Chris. I'm like in the...
I think we're having a little technical difficulty with our advance. There we go. All right, wonderful.
Okay, so just to reiterate, this is a discussion item for tonight. We are not requesting any kind of decision or action on behalf of the council. Next slide, Jay, please. So you're all familiar with the SubArea Plan document. This was approved by the city council late 2018 along with the SubArea Plan for the city center. These plans build on the Ridgegate zoning and basically provide the vision and the guidelines for how the east side will develop. We use these plans when we're evaluating proposed development applications. Next slide, please. And in this slide, you can see that the Village SubArea Plan applies to just over about 1,800 acres of land on the east side. They're broken out into three villages and two commercial districts. And they will, of course, be developed in phases over the course of the next several years. Given the long-range nature of these plans and the scope and size of this project, it was always anticipated that there would have to be some variations to these plans along the way, certainly just as more information becomes available, as we know more about the site that we're dealing with on the east side, and as we start to hear from builders and developers on their specific plans and certain market conditions that might influence some of these standards. So tonight, next slide, please. The two topics that I wanted to discuss with you are two topics that we would like to discuss some variations to potentially, and they are building setbacks and accessory dwelling units. So building setbacks just refers to the standard distance by which a building is measured to the property line. Establishing minimum, or in some cases, maximum distances is fairly common development practice. It just really guides the character and feel of a community and also the density of a subdivision. And then accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as they're sometimes called, are already permitted on the east side, and they're an option to builders as something that they might want to offer or to future homeowners as something they would like to take advantage of. And those are allowed provided that they meet certain criteria that are in the plan. And it's some of those criteria tonight that I wanted to introduce to you as possible variations. Next slide. So as you think about these issues, you're learning about them tonight, just keep in mind there are really two ways, two conditions by which variations to SubArea Plans should be considered. And this is straight out of the SubArea Plan, again, knowing we would have to deal with variations in the future. It says that the variations may be approved by the city council, provided that a development proposal supports the vision for Ridgegate East Villages and the intent communicated by the SubArea Plan. And also that the variation would not have a significantly detrimental effect on the ability to realize the vision and framework elements of the plan. So just to reiterate, in either approach, we would be taking these items back to the Planning Commission, back to the city council for final approval in one of two ways. They would be either evaluated as part of a site-specific development application, either a site improvement plan or subdivision plat, or they could be amended in the plan itself, in which case they would apply much more broadly to all development on the east side. So we don't really have to worry about how variations would be handled tonight necessarily. I just wanted, again, more to introduce you to the concepts of what we're looking at and why. Okay, so yeah, you can go back. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself there, Jay. Just starting through with setbacks, I'm going to move through these relatively quickly, so feel free to just stop me if you have any questions. But again, I wouldn't be too concerned about the specifics. I'm really trying to present more of kind of the concept of flexibility as it relates to setback standards, just to kind of, you know, gauge whether the council thinks some of these might be reasonable or not. So to start off, in the case of front yard setback, the SubArea Plan states that a home can't be more than, excuse me, 20 feet setback from the street. And the idea there was to really promote homes that have a more uniform urban feel and proximity to the street somewhere within that 10 to 20-foot range. However, this rule doesn't account for what we call flag lots or non-traditional lots. Next slide, please. So in this diagram, you can kind of see an example of what would be called a flag lot in terms of how it's configured. And just by virtue of that, you're really not able to meet that maximum 20-foot setback. So again, a variation of this type wouldn't apply very often, but it is something that would be run up against in cases like this.
Kelly, before you go on, could you just clarify that you were talking about for flag lots only? Would that be in the, would that be the proposal and that language would be added?
That would be our suggestion, yes.
Right, that's the proposal. Okay, so I just want to make it clear that this would not be any property, it would just be a specific property that met the criteria of what we're defining as a flag lot, is what you're proposing.
That's a great point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So other setback variations that we're looking at are really intended to provide more flexibility and more creative responses to site topography, for example, when there's grading issues, and to really just increase the opportunity for more diversity in the housing architecture. Keep in mind that regardless of the SubArea Plan setback, all homes will have to meet the Lone Tree Building Code. So that is, that is a given, regardless of what the SubArea Plan says, the building code does prevail. So potential variations would include things like allowances for roofs to overhang into the setback, but in no case would they be closer than two feet from the property line. And this is fairly common. You'll see this over in Ridgegate West at the, I think it's called the Villas or Bellwether Place along Willow Creek there, there's the single-family homes. That was a setback that was added on to the plat for that one where the encroachment could get as close as two feet to the property line. So if you can, I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of them, but you can visualize what that looks like. Next, just in terms of potential variations to the side yard setbacks for the homes themselves. And these would be to allow a minimum three-foot side setback rather than five feet. And then finally, the potential for homes to have a minimum distance between the homes of six feet rather than seven feet.
Kelly, I'm sorry. The interior side yard setback variance or that you're discussing, that would be for any single-family home in Ridgegate East, is staff's proposal?
Well, so there's a couple of different ways you could do it. Again, I'm presenting more of the concept of these. What they could be is a change to a specific preliminary plan or subdivision plat. If you wanted to look at the specifics of that area and apply it only to that application, that's one path. Another path would be to actually amend the SubArea Plan altogether, in which case it would apply more broadly to everything on the east side.
And I guess I want to express some concern over that side yard setback decrease to three feet. To me, that's really no, very little distance between the homes, and it's a place for garbage to collect and weeds to grow, and I'm not understanding why, other than allowing more increased density, is that the reason for that proposed? What advantage or benefit would it provide other than increased density? There's no economies of scale by a common wall or a common roof. You're just, I mean, a yardstick between, between homes. I guess my comfort level is not great with that, so.
Okay, yeah, and that's the kind of feedback we wanted to get tonight.
Go ahead, Win.
And my concern, you know, if you go back up one to the overhang, that seems like maybe a fire issue, too. I mean, if you, if you have homes that are, you know, even, I think, six feet, fire can jump that gap, and if you're only four feet from roof to roof, that seems kind of scary as well. I, I just, and, and there was a comment about maybe no overhang, and they did that in Aurora in the 80s, and it wasn't really pretty. I, I have concerns about that as well.
Okay. And again, I would just reiterate, of course, all of these homes would have to comply with the fire code as well as the building code.
Right.
Can you fast forward, Jay? The next slide just shows a diagram. And actually, the next slide shows an example of what this looks like in terms of having six-foot separation. And to your point, it really is to allow for a little bit more density in some areas. This is not, you know, something that's being proposed across the board, but in some areas where you are looking for that type of higher density, it does provide that option.
Currently, go ahead, go ahead.
To me, I'd almost rather have these be three-attached homes on a little bit bigger space or something like that than, than have these really narrow, I mean, you have windows that look into other windows and hardly enough room to get in there and paint. Yeah, I, I don't know, I just...
It'll all be a function of demand, of if consumers want that type.
And I understand that, too, but, and certainly, I don't know, that's one thing, but, so that doesn't look great to me.
Where are these photos from?
I want to say Highlands Ranch, but I'm not 100% certain. And if it's helpful, we can certainly go out and find other local examples of where this is happening so you can feel.
Are these actually six feet, Kelly?
Between homes.
So, but, so the side yard setback that I'm reading here, it's to reduce the minimum setback from five feet to three feet, right? So what, what, what is the six-foot, are you talking about between the back of the house and the street?
Three and three.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you. I was like, wait, what? Yeah, I would love to, if you could just give, I'd love to drive and go look at it. So if you could identify where this might be, where near, near to us, we could get a sense of what it looks like. And, and everywhere else, with the exception of the, of the, of the community you identified, it's, it's five feet, is that correct in the city? Is there something else in the city we could look at for single-family detached?
Five feet is a pretty typical standard. The example I gave was relative to the encroachment.
Oh, right, on the roofs. But is there still five feet between those? Because that, they seem like they're pretty tight to each other.
Yeah.
And I guess there's part of me, just in providing feedback, don't know that I would say no to this. My concern is that when you say yes, everybody, clearly builders are going to make more money, putting more houses on lots. If they're closer together, they have more room. So I don't know that I would say no everywhere, but the idea of just having a blanket, yeah, you can come in and request this, is concerning to me. I don't know if anybody else feels that way. And I know Win and I are sharing these concerns. I know Jay seems like he may be open to it. I'm not sure where you guys...
I wouldn't want all three villages to look exactly like that. I think in certain dense areas where the market supports it, it's an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a specific buyer who wants that kind of living environment. I lived in a zero-lot line in California when I was there, so I totally understand what that's like. So I would say that I'm agreeing that not, not holistically across the plan, but for a specific development where, again, it has to, has to meet some other criteria about urban walkability and other things, because I think that's kind of what, what comes with that kind of density, then I'd be open to it in a per-plan kind of chat, yeah.
What do you think, Mike?
I'm similar to where you, you all are. I don't mind flexibility, and I think there may be some lots where there's some issues in terms of you could get another unit in if you had a little flexibility in terms of, but the extent of it is what would concern me. I'm not comfortable giving a blanket through a rewrite of the, the standard that you can go in and build 50 homes side by side like this. I would, I would be uncomfortable with that.
Yeah, I'd be curious with the housing products that are being proposed, or the housing, forget what's being proposed, the way we have zoned it as a, as a city and what we're looking for, are there, are there portions of this, of the communities that you'd say lend themselves more to, more to the denser builds than, than others?
Sure, I mean, I think, you know, the idea would be to locate higher-density residential generally along more commercial areas where you want to have that walkability and access to commercial uses, where you don't necessarily have topography that is going to dictate that the home have to be probably larger and lots wider and so forth. So I, I think that in and of itself will, will lend diversity to the types of housing that we'll see on the east side, is that the site itself is so varied. Higher density tends to be more where it's flat, more where you're transitioning to commercial areas and so forth. But again, I think, you know, it's really good feedback because, again, the SubArea Plan gives two approaches. I happen to be showing actual red lines on the SubArea Plan, which was probably misleading. So that's one way. Another way is to actually look at these on a kind of a plat-by-plat or neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Would it be, would it be possible to establish some criteria, I mean, kind of a hybrid model to what you're proposing, that, that some, as we've indicated, comfort level, some housing developments may lend themselves more to this than others? So I completely agree, a more urban, dense setting would be appropriate for this use. So if, I mean, could you envision, Kelly, identifying some criteria that you check a few of these boxes and then you move into this hybrid model? I mean, or no? Do you think, the idea of everything case by case seems like a lot of work for, for staff, for council, and for the housing developers. It would give them some kind of certainty, like, don't, you know, this is the way this property is zoned, this is a layout that works. Yeah, you might benefit from, and I would say it would be a benefit. It would be a benefit to the residents that would be coming into the community, it would be a benefit to the community, but it can't just be to squeeze more houses on land, from my perspective. That can't be the only benefit.
Okay, sure, I think we could look at, at some kind of criteria around that.
Like maybe if the neighborhood had no more than 50 homes and it was, you know, in a mixed-use area or something like that, or I, and it didn't represent more than, you know, 20% of the single-family homes on the east side, or some, or is that the type of thing you're looking?
Yeah, something along those lines. It would give the developer some sense of whether or not to pursue this option or not, and not every developer saying, hey, this sounds great, because I can fit in 10 more homes if I do this, or 20 more homes if I do it this way, or what, so Bluffmont, I always get my Bluffmonts mixed up.
Right.
Bluffmont Green, that have that common area in the front, the, there's 10 feet between each of those individual ones that face, if you recall.
I'd have to check on that project.
Is that your, but, I, I think I'm going to have to start driving around a little bit, get a sense of, because that, that looks okay to me. It's got that big green space in the middle, so it creates a more open, as opposed to just things so tightly come back together. So I would say green space around the development would be something else that I could see them wanting to put them a little closer together and preserving a larger piece of land for, that's more usable than having that extra four feet in between the houses, so.
That bellwether project, I think that's one, they're nicer, higher-end ones, right? That's, yeah, they're really tight, so those are, but they are, they're 10, essentially five or five.
Aren't they touching?
No, 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 they're not.
No, they're, they are separate.
They're close to each other.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I think council would love to drive around. I think that's, I think, we would love to drive around and see some of this. So why don't you, so that was the, we've talked about the front yard, side yard, streets, we've got a couple others.
I have just two more quick ones, just, again, concepts. Next slide, please, Jay. This one would show how side yard setbacks might be treated when they're adjacent to a street. Again, bringing it potentially a little bit closer to the street from what's currently allowed, just 15 feet down to 10 feet. Again, not necessarily in all places, but in places where it's appropriate to do so because that's the, you know, more urban feel that you are after. Next slide. So this is just a graphic illustration of what that looks like with a 10-foot minimum along the street. Next slide. And then the final variation, this relates to the rear yard setback when there's an alley condition. This is a category that is just frankly not included in the SubArea Plan, and we want to make sure it's clarified. We would be adding that, or we would be proposing, excuse me, that there would be a zero-foot setback when you have an alley condition, which is fairly typical. I think I have an image in here next, Jay. Well, this is a graphic, again, what is proposed is on the, the left, and the current would be setting that garage further back from the alley for real, no real purpose. So that is something we would be looking at. I think I do have one photo example. Yeah. So this would be like a zero or no setback condition along the rear to an alley.
So since I've been in council, we received a lot of feedback from residents who have alley-loaded garage is in the Ridgegate East development, and they've got issues with snow plowing, they've got issues with parking, being able to get out, in and out of those alleyways and snow storage. So my concern isn't necessarily with the zero-foot rear setback, my concern is with the width of the alley. And so our, what's the, what is the, what is the requirement and, and how are we dealing with that? I mean, I think we, we heard a lot of growing pains when people moved into those homes about the troubles they had with the alleys and the garage loading from behind. And I guess what have we done to ensure we're not creating the same situation on the east side?
Okay. Yeah, we do have the roadway standards in the technical supplement that you'll be seeing specific to alleys. I don't recall what they are off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't either.
But yes, I think there are definitely some, some lessons to be learned, some feedback to be heard based on the limited experience that we have in Lone Tree, but certainly our builders have a tremendous amount of experience with these products, and we can certainly find out more from them.
And, and I believe the, the builders that built the ones that are in Ridgegate East right now had considerable experience as well, and they're, hold them in high regard. I think it's, you know, it's just some of our larger SUV vehicles trying to get them in and out of those garages proved more challenging to folks. And then people parked in front of their garages, and then the people across the alley couldn't get their cars out at all. And again, not our problem, but I don't, but our problem is snow removal, snow storage. At one point, those alleys were getting plowed out into city streets, and it was creating a lot of problems for the city. So I just want to make sure we're learning our lessons. And again, I don't have an issue with this, I don't, and I'd look, so kind of hijack the conversation about this other thing, but is everybody okay with the, with the zero-foot rear setback and the 10-foot side, street-side setback?
Yep.
In some cases, and I think that's, I think that's key to everything we're saying, is that in some cases, I think the zero-foot rear setback for the alleys is probably, would be in all cases, or am I mistaken there?
Well...
It's up to us, I understand that.
To be determined, but we'll, we'll get some answers to kind of the questions that you're after and see, you know, if you're comfortable with that sort of blanket variation.
Okay, does anybody else have any other comments you'd like to make about this? Mike, I feel like there's something you want to say.
Oh, well, I think you're, you're right on. To me, it's not how close the building is to the alley, it's how useful the alley is for the things that need to be done in, including the, the convenience of the residence, but also for emergency vehicles, for snow plowing. There's a space issue, I don't know whether it's the setback issue or it's in the design of the street.
Right. Okay, any, any other feedback on any of these variations? And Kelly, when you speak about a variation, just, can you discuss process a little bit? It could be handled a couple of different ways, where staff could do it, or it would go to Planning Commission, or would it go to staff and Planning Commission, or when this, when you, if, if we put into place any of these, I, I'd also like to understand the process associated with it.
Yeah, so I'm using the term variation very intentionally.
Yeah.
Because it's different than our more traditional variance process within the code. Because it's in the SubArea Plan, as a variation by which there's certain conditions to be evaluated against, it states that you can, you can review those as part of a development application or as part of a SubArea Plan amendment. In both cases, those would be coming through with the Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay, so, so development application. So I, I think, I think I'm leaning towards seeing them as part of a development application versus blanket changes to the SubArea Plan. What is everybody else thinking?
Gives us more flexibility.
Well, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any, anything you want to ask us that you don't think we answered or for you?
No, not on the setbacks.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so now, ADUs, as they're affectionately called.
Okay, so again, the SubArea Plan already allows for accessory dwelling units when they meet minimum requirements. They're an option for builders, and they're an option for homeowners, certainly not a requirement. So again, what are they? They're independent living units within a primary residence. In these particular examples, they are above a garage, but they don't necessarily have to be above a garage. They can be within a home, they can be in an attic space, in a basement space. The SubArea Plan specifically disallows separate cottages as ADUs, which is, we probably wouldn't have the space in our environment to allow those anyway, but they can come in a number of different forms. The middle photo actually is in Bluffmont Green, and I think out of the 50 or so homes that are in that subdivision, I think five or six buyers took advantage of that builder option to begin with. So there's a few benefits to...
Kelly, sorry, Win has a...
Sure. Just a quick question. And one of the conditions is that it needs to be built by the original builder at the time of the home construction. Is that correct for the east side? I think it was true in the Bluffmonts.
When it's above a garage.
Ah, just above the garage. Well, right, that makes sense if you finish your attic or finish your basement. Okay.
Yep, I have another question, I forgot. I meant to ask you this. When we talked about those setbacks, one of the issues, the other issues that came up when I was on the Planning Commission and council was the driveways not being large enough to contain a vehicle. So the driveway was basically not usable, you couldn't store your vehicle on there because it hung over and covered the sidewalk and all. So I don't want to do anything that would impact the sidewalks. So we need to have enough room in the driveway for cars to park.
Yes, understood. And some of this gets to, just quickly going back to...
Sorry.
The front setback might be like a third garage.
Yep.
Whereas the driveway is still long, but the building...
No, I understand. I just wanted to make that clear to you, is that I would not want anything that would have cars leaning over into this, or, you know, extending to cover the sidewalk. So thanks, sorry for that.
We have been talking about that very issue.
Okay, okay. It's like all the things, all of a sudden I remembered as I was reading this, I'm like, oh yeah, we don't, we don't want that.
Yes.
Okay.
So just quickly, you know, ADUs provide a number of benefits. They can, you know, provide multi-generational housing options for families with children or with aging parents to stay within the same home. They're another avenue towards more affordable options for housing. They provide owners with supplemental income if they're renting out an ADU, for example. And then, you know, they also provide work-from-home space, which was important even before COVID-19, and now what we're hearing is more and more trends towards the demand for people to have not only a designated workspace within the home, but a somewhat private workspace. So it's possible that we'll be seeing a little bit more demand for ADUs in that regard. But I would just say, even if there is this increased demand and flexible guidelines as, as you might have proved, we still don't think ADUs are going to represent a significant portion of development. portion of development in the east side in terms of the overall units. Just for some context, we do know that the builder, one of the builders on the east side, excuse me, for example, is looking at offering ADUs as an option in about 20% of their total unit offerings. So if every single buyer opted to have an ADU, which is highly unlikely, it would really just represent 20%, they happen to think it'll be something more along the lines of about 4%. So just to give you some idea. So in this slide, you can see that the requirements of the subarea plan cover all of these different topics by which an ADU would be reviewed and permitted through our building department. The ones that are in gold are the ones that we are suggesting might want to be revisited and I'll hit on those real quickly tonight. Just wanted to let you know, parking is on this list. It is not one of those items that we would be proposing any changes to. The council approved a minimum three parking spaces anytime there's an ADU and so that is something we would not be proposing for change. The areas that we are suggesting proposed changes really are a result of input from the builder community and a fair amount of additional research that we were able to do on this topic since the subarea plan was originally approved. At that time, even though it wasn't that long ago, a lot of communities were looking to each other because this is still relatively new concept to say, what is so-and-so doing? And if they're doing it, it must be right. Well, guess what? It's not. And we actually, at Mayor Malley's request, attended a CML workshop last year, I believe, where.
Pre-COVID, anyway. It was pre-COVID, but it was actually this year.
Okay. Our chief building official, as well as our planning manager, attended that and it was really just all about things that are getting in the way of providing successful ADUs, things that end up being, you know, it's well-intended, but actually are disincentives. And so that's what we were revisiting this section with an eye towards to say, if this is something we really want to see as an option, what are some things that might really just be getting in the way of allowing people to do that? So starting with, let's see, the size of these units. It relates to the maximum size that an ADU can be and obviously the intent here is to ensure that they are secondary to the primary unit and don't overwhelm the character of the neighborhood. Rather than a straight maximum 600 square foot, which is what it currently reads, a lot of places are looking at a little bit more flexible approach that is more of a percentage. And we threw out, you know, for example, 40% of the overall habitable area could be an ADU or, for example, 900 square feet, whichever is less. So that's kind of the concept that we would be looking at. And, you know, I would again, point in your packet, we did have a comparison matrix, did do a lot of research with what other communities are doing, how they handle this particular issue and others, and it does vary. I mean, there's absolutely no one-size-fits-all. So it kind of comes down to what we're anticipating the types of products to be on the east side and what we think would be, you know, probably a reasonable fit in terms of allowing some flexibility, but still meeting the intent.
So I'm comfortable with that. Is everybody else comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The other one, again, going back to setbacks, this is really just consisting with the setbacks that I mentioned earlier. Next slide. The other one is height of an ADU. Our current requirement is that the maximum building height could be 25 feet. What we're proposing is that in no case shall the height of an ADU attached to the house or above a garage be greater than the height of the primary dwelling unit. So again, it just kind of depends on the height of the overall primary unit would be more of the driver of what that ADU looks like than would kind of arbitrary 25-foot number. Again, I don't, you know, it's a concept at this point and.
I think I've got comfort, I'm comfortable with it. Everybody, yep, we're all comfortable with it.
Wonderful. Okay. And then in terms of appearance, the subarea plan does cover a number of different things relative to ensuring, again, that the ADUs are compatible with the primary building. One of them has to do with restrictions being that an entrance to an ADU can't be on the front side of a home, which is fine, we think, as the way it's written. The following wording regarding stairs, we think is just kind of confusing frankly and not worded very well. So what we would like to do is explore language that would make it clear that, you know, you can't have an entrance to an ADU on the front side. You can't have the stairway to an entrance be in the front yard, but you can have that access to a side ADU through stairways that might go through the front yard. Next slide, I think, has an illustration of kind of what I'm talking about. Although in the photo example, this one happens to be a two-story ADU with a stair access, which probably not something we would see on the east side because these would tend to be more at-grade. But you can see that the idea is just to make it clear that we're not saying you can't find a way to access that unit, it's just that the stairs themselves have to be predominantly on the side.
I'm fine exploring the language. I'm still not, yeah, I know you're not quite there yet.
I don't think we're 100% on the language either, but it needs to be fixed, I guess.
Yeah, I think there's. Sing, head nods, so yes, consensus on that one, too.
Wonderful. Okay. And then finally, the owner occupancy requirement is something that is in the subarea plan currently. So, but it states that the owner of the property must live on the property if there is an ADU on it. And it references maintenance as the key intent of that requirement. However, again, in learning more about, you know, what are kind of barriers to getting this ADU concept through, this, there tend to be other considerations with this that we just wanted to provide to you again. Really, just keeping in mind, everything on the east side is going to be part of a mandatory HOA. So in terms of maintenance of a property, you will have that layer of oversight in addition to, you know, city oversight in terms of just making sure properties are maintained. The other thing to think about is that a requirement like this requires essentially a way to track it and that's most likely through a deed restriction. And anytime you have a deed restriction, just something to be aware of that it can be, you know, a cloud on the title, it might be a barrier for someone wanting to enter into a contract on that home. So that, it's just something to think about. It's something that someone might hesitate and say, I don't want that. And it's also something that's very, very difficult to enforce over time. And of course, you know, without knocking on doors or even responding to complaints can be a little tricky with this one. And as you know, anything that's difficult to enforce, just.
Why have it?
Yeah, why, why bother?
I do have, it's my recollection that it wasn't the maintenance issue so much as it was the issues associated with the Airbnbs and people coming in and out, not being respectful of the neighborhood, parking, having parties, bringing people in. That was the issues that, my recollection, when council discussed this before. So.
Right.
I would love to understand how having a mandatory HOA could address those issues of, and I don't know that they can, Kelly, so you could come back and say, yeah, you know, if you allow these, it's going to be the HOA's problem to deal with. But that was my concern and I think we, unfortunately, it feels like right now, sitting here, we kicked the can down the road by saying, well, we'll just have the owners live on property and then it won't be a problem. But it's there be the issue, in my opinion.
Right, because I can.
There is a restriction on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do have a 12-week restriction on ADUs in the subarea plan to prevent exactly that.
Which we would also have to be enforcing, right?
Because if we, if the owner doesn't have to be there, so you have a tenant and then you have an Airbnb in the attached tenant, you know, who, nobody's going to keep an eye on anything. And I know in Carriage Club, we have a most hated Airbnb and it, it's like awful.
So, so that's the issue. I'm not saying no on this because I do think, for all the reasons you stated, but I guess I would love to understand how the mandatory, and if you could educate me, council, on how the mandatory HOAs might be able to address some of those issues. And I think they're more associated with the short-term rental issues. I don't want to.
Okay.
Label any one short-term rental worse than any other short-term rental, but, and I'd love to hear council's input also on that, what they're thinking about with this. See, it does seem unreasonable to have them have to be on property a little, to me.
I agree with that.
But.
I have concerns with mandatory HOA and enforcement, whether you're talking about maintenance and sightliness or things like people going to outside agencies and then whether, if the HOA doesn't deal with it, it grows to where somebody sets up a rental business.
Yep.
In a neighborhood. I don't understand how it works. I have talked with homeowners in Lone Tree that have moved out of the area because they didn't like what was going on in terms of lack of ability of the HOA to enforce.
Right.
Cominance. So I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence on this one in terms, I don't think owner presence solves the problem, so that's not the issue.
Right, the HOA.
I'm just a little uncomfortable about mandatory HOAs and enforcement.
Well, we have no choice on that one, I don't think. I mean, it's better than, right now, we've got, we've got mandatory and non-mandatory HOAs and the mandatory HOAs, for the most part, are able to do a good job of, of ensuring that the rules are enforced within the neighborhood. I mean, I will be ashamed to admit, I've gotten a letter saying something needed attention on my property and, you know, and if you don't do it, they put a lien on your property. I'm not, and having a mandatory HOA allows that process to happen and it precludes the city from having to lien in. Where we have non-mandatory HOAs, I've seen many more calls for city services to address them. So I do think mandatory HOAs are a good thing.
Yeah.
From a, from a, and if you don't want to live in a mandatory HOA, then don't choose that option, right, Mike? So, but you're right, there's still enforcement issues, whether it's the city with the parking enforcement, when somebody's car's been there for past the time and they just move it 10 inches or two inches or one inch and, you know, people will get around it. I just question why those people live in communities that have those rules. So I don't know how to address your concern, I guess. Long way of saying that, Mike.
I don't either.
All right, well, I think good to be aware of it. To me, I, we can't make rules for the mandatory HOAs. I mean, those are rules that they're created, they do that, but I guess I am curious if there are, if mandatory HOAs have dealt with this ADU issue.
Successfully.
Yeah, yeah. For example, they exist in, in, I think there are some in Heritage Hills. I don't know if they're renting them out, but they are separate locked-off units from the remainder of the homes. And I don't know if we've heard any issues arising in that community or in Bluffmont Heights. Is that where they exist?
Bluffmont Green.
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 Thank you. I told you I get my Bluffmonts mixed up.
Me, too. I just called them the Bluffmonts.
Yeah. Yeah, so where are we, council? I mean, I'm not thinking I want to require ownership, but I'd love to be able to give some tools or best practices on how to deal with the short-term rental issue.
Right, because I, I feel like the mandatory HOA is definitely the way to go, but I know in Carriage Club where we have a mandatory HOA, they do not have the tools that they need to regulate the short-term rentals and, and I would love to provide them some successful tools. I don't know what those are, though, so that's part of my problem.
I think we've got some suggestions that we can give council, but probably be better at another session.
That'd be great, Seth.
Good.
That would be great. Okay.
Okay, so wonderful. This is all really good feedback. This is exactly what we were looking for. Again, just to reiterate, you can tackle these a couple of different ways in the future, either through a site-specific plan or a subarea plan amendment. I heard your feedback on that. And as you think of any additional questions or comments you might have for staff, please reach out to me.
Thank you on this, Kelly. And I think this is really good work, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the proposed amendments to Chapter 17 of the municipal code subdivisions. Ann Marshana is going to be presenting tonight and this item actually is on our, is, was continued and is on our council agenda for this evening as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council, nice to see you all again. Well, we will attempt to make this short and sweet. We have talked about this issue in numerous iterations. So without further ado, I'm going to give you a quick recap of the revisions to Chapter 17 as proposed. The most important revision being that our legal counsel has reviewed the entire document, has refined the language, has looked at processes and has completed a full review. So this draft comes to you in that form. We are updating the penalties and the enforcement, removing exemptions, including the FAA avocation notice, cleaning up the structure and process of the code, and then two primary additions that we have discussed at length, referencing the landscape design guidelines and standards for public right-of-way, as well as including a security provision for landscaping. Next slide, please. Okay, a recap of our discussions to date. In former study sessions, it was apparent that as a whole, Lone Tree considers landscaping in and along the public right-of-way to be a public improvement. It is something that we value and that we want to protect and provide a guarantee for. And furthermore, that the city wants to ensure landscaping in and along the public right-of-way aligns with the city's design guidelines and safety standards. And the way that we do that, similar to all of our other development application processes, is that we review and approve landscape plans against our code and design guidelines. And then once we have that approved plan in our records, we can refer back to that plan for long-term maintenance tracking and for addressing any issues that may arise. And I will reiterate with this slide here that when we say landscaping in and along public right-of-ways, we are specifically referring to right-of-way or gateway or landscaping tracks that may be called out on a subdivision plat that are adjacent to collectors and arterials only. So we are not talking about local streets, we are not talking about individual lot landscaping. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so we have discussed our proposed code revisions in our previous study sessions and we continue to come back to the same proposal. We refine it. Linda gives us feedback on that language and how best to present that language and staff has come back to the same point in the beginning, that proposed code revisions, it is staff's opinion that this is the city's best approach to treat all developers, large and small, in a fair fashion, to be able to provide a transparent and predictable development process to our developers that is both easy to understand as well as easy to apply. Staff is of the opinion that it is efficient. It includes better integration with master development agreements that may exist and it is also effective. It is easier to track relative to the issuance of building permits and thereby it reduces error. We did look at sliding scale variations. We looked at several variations to that, several different applications, and we just weren't able to find a sliding scale that would provide us with this approach as directed by council. Next slide, please. So with that said, I will review how we are proposing that code be updated. So what we are talking about, public landscape improvements. We are looking for a guarantee for those landscape improvements. So in general, this is the process. Following approval of the preliminary plan, which is where the bulk of all of the design and phasing occurs, we come to our final plat process. And with our final plat process, relative to landscape improvements, we would have that landscaping project estimate and that would be a very specific cost estimate for the required landscaping improvements. That would be paired with that subdivision improvements agreement. You had a template in your packet that shows you the language. Again, that language is approved by the city attorney and is utilized currently. And then we would have a guarantee. So the guarantee is the icing on the cake and that is what seals the deal for our guarantee for our improvements. And we are proposing that the guarantee be provided in one of two ways. A developer could choose the traditional security component, cash or letter of credit, or they could choose a flexible component and this would be dependent on the development. So here is the menu that staff is proposing and you will see this reflected in code. And you will see this reflected in code in Section 17-2-100. So first, again, we have the traditional component. That is C1, wherein a developer may say, you know what, I don't want to have any restrictions on the phasing of my building. I'm going to give you the 115% and be done with it. Or maybe they would like to have some flexibility. And so they look at the flexible option in our menu, which is guarantee in lieu of a financial security. So in the case of single family detached, we are proposing that landscaping be completed prior to the issuance of the remaining building permits for the remaining 25% of a subdivision plat or a subdivision phase as it is identified in that subdivision improvements agreement. And then relative to single family attached, multifamily and commercial, that would be landscaping prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued for those structures. So that is our very brief and we hope concise overview of what we are proposing. When you put Lone Tree on this regional comparison that we have looked at previously, Lone Tree falls very nicely in the middle. We are neither the most restrictive nor the least restrictive. And we believe that this proposal promotes fiscally responsible, business friendly and high quality development for the city and its subdivisions. And with that, I will take any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions from anybody? So I think, right, my concerns were addressed in the review. I think we were specific about when building permits would be restricted and when certificates of occupancy would be restricted, building permits associated with the single family detached subdivisions, the COs or with the single family attached or multifamily or non-residential. And I think it clearly, the language is much more clear, in my opinion, about what that 75% means therefore. So I appreciate the additional attention on this. And I think it reads well and I think it's understandable. So if somebody comes up to me now, I can explain it and I can point to it. And I think we have a better document for it. So thank you for the additional time. And we'll look forward to hearing it. If nobody else has anything, a little later on our council agenda this evening.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. So next up, we have a fun times budget, 2020 budget amendment update. And Uli is here, our wonderful finance director, to walk us through this fun stuff.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Today, I would like to discuss the 2020 budget amendment. And we've met multiple times to go through the impacts on our current budget. So I will keep this as brief as possible. So the main reason, really, for a budget amendment this year is to propose a realistic budget. And the main impact this year on the budget, obviously, has been due to COVID-19. The pandemic impacted consumer behavior and consumer spending. So we've been seeing a shift to online shopping, for example. A recent article in the Denver Post noted that in Colorado, losses seem to be concentrated in communities that are reliant on regional outside spending, which Lone Tree is affected in that area as well. Nonessential businesses were ordered to close for multiple months throughout this year. So we're seeing revenue losses associated with that. Certain businesses had to permanently close. In Lone Tree, we don't see offsetting revenue streams that some of our neighboring communities are seeing coming from property taxes or taxation of groceries. So we don't have as much of a buffer in other areas. So again, our main revenue stream is sales tax. And that presented a challenge this year with COVID-19. There's continued uncertainty in future months and quite frankly, into 2021, as we've discussed. So the changes that we are proposing within the budget amendment are reducing revenue expectations. And we'll be going into that in just a little bit. Adjust expense budget based on the identified expense savings and cuts that we've discussed with council before. And the delta of that using the working reserve to balance the budget essentially. So in this slide, we're going through comparing our tax revenue to actual revenues that we perceived through June and our forecast throughout the end of the year. And you saw that or you see that in January and February, we're tracking right on budget. And then in March, mid-March, certain businesses were ordered to close. So we're seeing impacts on there with a major impact in April as well as May. Recovering in June, but continuing to anticipate major shortfalls throughout the end of this year. This is a summary of the impacts to the general fund from the financial perspective. So the first column is our 2020 adopted budget. The second column is the adjustment that we're proposing within the budget amendment. And then the 2020 amended in the third column. So revenues, we are anticipating a decrease of $9.7 million in the general fund. On the expenditure side, we've identified $8.7 million of savings and cuts with a net variance of about $1 million, which we're proposing to dip into the working reserve balance for. So the categories that we divvy the expense reduction and cuts up into are one, operational cuts, total up about $1.8 million. Hiring freezes and furloughs make up about $612,000. And then reductions in capital outlay of roughly $6 million. And on the next slide, we've outlined just a couple of examples for those areas. So within the operational cuts, they include deferral of vehicle purchases, both in community development as well as the PD side, reduced city events, reduce costs in IT and deferring the zoning code update. The capital cuts include Lincoln Avenue overlay, which was a big project that was planned for this year, defer on traffic signal upgrades, and then service reduction and a temporary suspension of the Link-on-Demand, our shuttle service. And again, those are just a few examples. So those were the impacts on the general fund. And I have a summary slide in the end that brings all of those numbers together. But obviously, not just the general fund was impacted by COVID-19. We are suggesting an amendment across all funds. So looking at the special revenue funds for the art center. Initially, when COVID hit and the art center had to close, we were able to reappoint some of the staff members to some of the COVID-19 initiatives. And we are able to seek reimbursement for those through the CARES Act funding. So there's actually a revenue stream that will be coming into the art center and offsetting some of those losses. However, since we were able to reopen the facility with limited capacity, right, we still had to look at reducing costs significantly in 2020, which unfortunately includes furloughs. So the impact on the budget that we are proposing or that we are anticipating is a reduction in revenue of about $800,000, a reduction in appropriation of about $1.3 million, and a reduced transfer from the general fund into the art center of $883,000. And that's the combined transfer for art center and annual events and arts and cultural events. The debt service funds obviously were impacted as well as a portion of our self tax revenue is going into the debt service funds. So just a quick recap here. The arts and cultural facilities debt service fund, we're anticipating a revenue reduction of about $620,000. We also are reducing the appropriation for capital projects that were anticipated for this year that were cut to the art center. So we're reducing that by $450,000 as well. And then we are anticipating a revenue reduction of $420,000 in the park and recreation improvements debt service fund. I do want to note, though, due to prudent fiscal management in the past, reserves have been built up in the debt service funds. So even with these impacts on revenues for the debt service funds, we're still able to cover our payments that we are required to do so. Since we're already working on a budget amendment, we, a secondary intent is to true up the timing difference that occurred last year in regards to the Richgate Parkway widening. So last year, we anticipated less reimbursable costs in 2019 than we actually received. So we just have to balance out the years. So this, again, is just due to a timing difference. So we are proposing to decrease the reimbursable costs by the amount that was received in addition in 2019. We're also proposing to increase the 2020 expense budget since the expense had shifted from 2019 in 2020. The overall project cost is not affected by this. So the overall cost is staying the same. This is, again, just a shift in terms of timing. And you can see on the next slide the net impact of that adjustment. So we are decreasing our reimbursable costs by $2.7 million. We're increasing the expenditures by $2.5 million with a net effect of $5.2 million. To sum it up into one picture, and again, this is just the general fund to give you an idea of the overall impact. Again, the first, we will be adjusting all the beginning balances of all funds across the board to true them up to the 2019 ending balances based on the audited financial statements. You can see that in the general fund, that adjustment is $6 million. And that is mainly due to the timing difference for the capital projects, including Richgate, the Richgate adjustment that we're proposing. Again, a summary, you see the net impact from COVID-19 of about $1 million. We're proposing to use the working reserve. The net impact of Richgate of $5.2 million, which, again, is the majority was accounted for in that beginning balance adjustment with a proposed ending balance of still $16.3 million. So with next steps, we will be presenting this budget amendment for consideration of approval on September 15. We will continue to monitor actual revenues as they are coming in on a monthly basis. And we'll be updating, continue to update council on any major changes to revenues compared to the adjusted budget. Any questions?
Okay, that was a lot, but we had seen much of it before. So are there any questions from council?
Just a timing question in terms of process. Are we likely to see another adjustment before the end of the year? Or does this deal with it for 2020?
This deals with the status quo. If something significant happens.
We don't expect.
But we don't expect to.
Just to point out, if revenues come in better than anticipated, it wouldn't be necessary to move forward with another budget amendment. And we would be holding expenses at the level that we're proposing with this amendment. So really, the only need for another amendment would be if revenues would drop below what we are proposing here or there's expenditures that would need to be increased for.
And I think we've been fairly prudent and conservative with the revenue forecasts for the remainder of the year. I think it's been informed by what's happened in the past. So God help us if something more catastrophic happens. And that will be my prayer tonight, that that is not the case. So, yes. Praying is good, just for a host of things. So, all right, I think we know we're positioned where we are positioned. It's a different space than we've ever existed in as a city before. But that is, I think, we're doing the most responsible thing we can be doing right now with the information that we have. So thank you for walking us through that.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to our legislative update. And Jeff Hallwell will be presenting in person.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council, for your time this evening. Great to see you. And tonight's legislative update is actually discussing the upcoming state ballot initiatives that you'll be seeing. And the ballot is officially set. So now it's time to review it with you. The good news is there's nothing new from what you saw last time. But all 11 issues did make it to the ballot that we were either there or pending from last time. So I'll run through them quickly as you remember them from last time. But we'll add some context to what we know as well. 19042, it was a Senate bill from last year. The national popular vote is on the ballot. So you'll be seeing that in November. Next slide. The cigarette, tobacco and nicotine products tax is on the ballot as well. And that will increase taxes for all nicotine products at a varying degree and go to programs that primarily serve public school interests in Colorado or preschool programs that will be initiated in the state of Colorado. Next slide, please. The regulation of bingo raffles for nonprofit charities will also be on the ballot and how they are regulated from a, how you would pay your staff to do it in addition to the time it takes to get a license. Next slide, please. The Gallagher Amendment. This will be a big one that you'll be seeing. They're calling it repeal property tax assessment rates. What it does, as we mentioned before, is freeze the property tax assessment rate for residential properties at 7.15% for the upcoming years. That allows local governments that count on that revenue from typically lowering every year because residential property keeps growing in value. It holds that steady. And then personal business property tax, which is assessed at 29%, will start to float as well. And it'll become a different taxation scenario in Colorado if this is approved in November. Next slide, please. Initiative 76 is the only one that's a constitutional amendment. And it would change the state constitution on the qualification of electors for state and local elections. Next slide, please. Restoration of gray wolves is a statute change that would require, allow gray wolves to be reintroduced into Colorado west of the Continental Divide. Next slide. Initiative 120 would create new prohibitions on late term abortions. Next slide. And these were the ones that were now put onto the ballots since our last meeting. Initiative 257 allows local voters in the communities of Central City, Black Hawk and Cripple Creek to vote on whether they want to expand their betting limits and the types of games that are provided at those locations. Next slide. And this is the biggie that you'll start hearing about, certainly from the business community. Initiative 283 is the paid family and medical leave insurance program. You've heard a lot about it in legislation. It has now made it to the ballot. What it does is create a state enterprise, an insurance enterprise, that's managed statewide, to support paid family leave up to 12 weeks per year for employers that employers will pay a tax into or a fee into to support this program. Those 12 weeks would be for, as it's mentioned here, new child, caring for family members or caring for yourself if you have a serious health issue. The nuances of this include a local government provision. A local government can opt out. However, local government employees of those that have opted out could opt in if they want to be part of this and pay their own premiums. Other nuances include the, what the enterprise would be. It would be a state, as you've heard a lot of before, there was debate on whether it should be something like our public-private partnership and Pinnacle Assurance or a state-run enterprise through the Department of Labor. This suggests a state-run enterprise that would be an insurance program operated in the state. The Denver Metro Chamber, I'm sure, at their annual meeting up there today, this will be topic du jour of that day. So stay tuned to some more information as this comes up. Next slide, please. Voter approval for fee-based enterprises. Initiative 295, as we mentioned before, creates the requirement for a Tabor election for certain state enterprises that have very large anticipation of revenues or fees. So this would not relate to raising fishing licenses or something like that. If you, this relates to the hospital provider fee that happened a few years ago. And if a state program's introduced that would require significant new fees, it would also require a vote of the electors to. new fees, it would also require a vote of the electors to make it happen. Next slide, please. And then some nuance to this. The state income tax rate reduction from 4.63% to 4.55%. That's for individuals and businesses. Is on the 2020 ballot. They estimate that it will cost, the revenue difference from the state will be about $300 million in the first couple of years, per year for the first couple of years. And oddly enough, you know, Governor Polis is showing his libertarian streak. He thinks he might support this because he previously mentioned a state income tax reduction as part of his own agenda in the past. So that, we, we'll, we'll see how this translates into the fall, but it's officially on the ballot and one of the things you can decide on. Next slide, please. It's worth noting what's not on the ballot. We talked about this a lot before. Limits on local housing growth, graduated income tax system, as well as lots of debate around oil and gas setbacks. You will not be making any decisions around oil and gas this year, though it's worth noting that the State Oil and Gas Commission is going through a lot of rulemaking right now, and that you're probably seeing a lot of that in the newspaper, but it has nothing to do with a ballot initiative. Now to some local issues. The City of Castle Pines, as we speak, is considering a ballot initiative. They whittled it down to one, and it would be for road maintenance and reconstruction, an eight-mile property tax, and up to $30 million of financing for, for road maintenance. And it specifically calls out Castle Pines Parkway and Monarch Boulevard. Next slide, please. But I should have mentioned previously that they haven't decided. I mean, it's on their agenda tonight. They haven't made a final decision. I presume we'll, we'll know by the end of the day whether they did. City of Littleton, just last week, decided to do a referred measure for direct election of mayor. As you all know, the mayor of Littleton's not elected at large, but by council. So they've referred this measure from council to see if the community would like a direct election of the mayor. Next slide. The City of Denver is proposing two tax increases now. One, a 0.25% sales tax increase for homelessness, and another 0.25% for renewable energy and climate initiatives.
Jeff, do we know what that would bring their sales tax rate to? I can look it up.
Four and a half. Four and a half, yeah.
Four and a half percent.
Their total hits almost nine once that's done.
Okay.
Just shy of 9%. So they would certainly be the largest in the metro area if both of these were to pass. Cherry Creek Public Schools, as you know, is offering up a ballot initiative for operations as well as infrastructure in the school district. And then finally, just a couple of things of note, there are two commissioner races locally that are happening. Commissioner District Two and Commissioner District Three in Douglas County. And then, next slide, statewide, for state seats, Senate District Four, which Jim Smallwood currently sits in, is up for election. They, they happen every four years. And then, of course, the state representative seats, which happen every two years locally, District 43 and 44 are also up for election this year. That's all I have on this topic, and I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Denver's is currently 4.3, so it'd be 4.8.
It'd be 4.8. Okay. Thanks, Seth. Anything else from council? Any questions on any of these? There's a lot. There's a lot. Okay, thanks, Jeff. You're still on deck, though, so we're gonna do, we actually did, I would say, something somewhat fun during COVID. We had the pleasure of, through the great work of the South Metro Chamber, and Jeff Keener and their Chair, Kristi Lee, had a tour with some of distinguished members of the University of Colorado staff that came down to Centennial and Lone Tree, and Jeff and I, and Seth was able to join us. And Austin snuck in there for a bit as well. It was all outside, socially distanced and masks wearing, but Jeff's gonna give everyone a little overview of, of the fun we had.
Yes. Thanks again, Mayor and Council. It was a terrific afternoon, and we are, as you mentioned, very fortunate to have the South Metro Chamber help organize this event. To introduce CU President Mark Kennedy and CU Denver Chancellor Michelle Marks to our community. In addition to them, and I'll get back to them in a bit, they brought down the new dean of their business school at Denver, Dr. Scott Dobson, as well as Adam Salazar, who's a part of the president's staff. And CU President Mark Kennedy is only a year into his job at the University of Colorado. He was appointed in May of 2019. And then, and as a bonus to his desire to see the community, Dr. Michelle Marks just joined CU Denver as chancellor in July of this year. So she is very fresh to Colorado. She comes from Maryland and was at George Mason University. So brand-new to CU and CU Denver, and a great opportunity to meet her as well. We made a whirlwind tour around the South Metro area, started at Centennial Airport, and went from there to the Cherry Creek Innovation Campus in Dove Valley, and came south from there to CU South Denver. I put an asterisk by it because we didn't stop. They are very familiar with their own facility, but we certainly made the pitch about their ability to grow on that site. Went to Ridge Gate, and when I say Ridge Gate, we stopped at the Ridge Gate Parkway Station, got on the roof and looked east at the new potential development in Ridge Gate East, which was, it was a beautiful afternoon for that view. And then moved on to Charles Schwab, QWIT, and Lockheed Martin, and for our business visits within the community. And then headed north after that into Centennial, where we visited the Comcast Media Center on Dry Creek Road, Arrow Electronics, and then they have the opportunity to show off the Jones District. But obviously, I'm biased, and the Ridge Gate tour was much better, of course.
But they do have a pool in Jones District.
They do have a pool there so far, right. Well, I'm sure we'll have a pool too.
We all wanted to jump in it. It was one of the warmest days.
And, you know, I just wanted to just show off some pictures. A socially-distanced event was, was achieved, and much different photos than you would have seen a year ago. You know, Keith Simon meeting Dr. Marks right there at the Ridge Gate Parkway Station. An overview to President Kennedy of the Ridge Gate Project itself. Eamon did a terrific job at Charles Schwab near their outdoor theater. Plus, it was so hot. We were planning to do it outside, and they brought us in anyway, so.
Restaurant break.
You had a restaurant break. We needed, and so we snuck inside. But standing inside the customer, or the, the employee center, as you're aware of, near the cafe, was nobody in that building. It was quite a different feeling.
Yes.
We're eager to see the Schwabbies come back because it's a different place without them all there. But certainly, they did a terrific job at Schwab. And then moving on to QWIT, of course, they, they did a great job as well. Chris Stolzer and the team really, I think, impressed President Kennedy as well as Michelle Marks. And then I don't have a photo of this because we did it briefly, but Kristi Lee of Lockheed Martin did an overview of all the new people coming to Lockheed Martin as well. So thank you for letting us introduce that. It was a terrific afternoon and a good opportunity to showcase that.
And a little, a little of what it was like pre-COVID. There was a little, except for the masks and the distance, there was, there was a little glimmer of what life used to be and what life will return to. So Jeff, thanks for joining me on that day. And I wish you mentioned Mayor Pico, as well as representatives from the City of Centennial were, were part of the entourage. So it was great. So thank you. And now, moving on, we, to what do we owe the distinguished pleasure? Mr. Medina is here in person. So, so Bill is gonna give us an update on, on COVID testing, the blood drive, and maybe a little update on kind of some of the things that are happening at the state level with CDPHG. So thanks for.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It has been a little while since I've been here in person. So I want to give you an update on the community blood drive. This has been a great initiative between the Art Center staff and Vitalent. They've had four successful blood drives here in, in the Art Center with a total of 251 donors. It's interesting to note that the donors are being tested for COVID antibodies, and they get those results emailed back to them once the, the results are in. According to Vitalent, these donations have saved 744 lives, which is something I think we can all be proud of. And there are two more events, one planned for September and October. So we've had really good participation in that. Next topic is the COVID-19 community testing, which is an initiative with Douglas County. They contracted with Stride Health Centers, and they're using $1.1 million worth of the CARES funding in order to fund this. So they have locations across the county every Monday, every week, starting the 1st of September through the 30th of December. So here at the Art Center, we have the location on Mondays, beginning on the 14th, since the 7th is a, is a holiday. Tuesday through Thursday, they're gonna be down at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. And then on Wednesday, there's gonna be a second location running in Highlands Ranch at St. Andrews Church. The Friday location is gonna be somewhere in Parker, and they're still trying to determine exactly, the exact location for that. But they will be doing it weekly, every day, with the exception of the holidays listed there. The testing sites are drive-through, and they're gonna be open from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So who's getting tested? So they're offering viral or swab testing for individuals that have symptoms, individuals that have been exposed to positive COVID individuals, and then healthcare workers and first responders. Antibody testing is being offered as well, and that's anyone who wants a test that has been symptom-free for 14 days. So they're, they're being very specific about saying this is no cost, being that health insurance will be built, but individuals that do not have insurance, it's gonna be paid for through a federal grant. So the results they're anticipating to be available within two to five days. They're expecting about 150, they're preparing for 150 tests at each, each site each day. So that gives us 900 tests every week in the county. And preregistration is available on the county website.
So could I just ask a follow-up, Bill? With, so there are drive-through tests? So what are the logistics? Where is it set? So even in the winter months, or when, like, are we gonna put a tent up, or do they, how does it work?
Yeah, so they have, so here at the Art Center, for example, they're gonna be entering from the north side on, right, right here. They'll drive through the parking lot. The people that are getting, getting the viral test or the swab will just stay in their car, pull up to a tent. The attendants will, will, will work with them right there. People who are doing the antibody testing, that's actually a blood draw. So they will have to go, get out of their vehicle, park their vehicle, get out, and go over to a tent.
Okay.
To get their blood drawn. So they will have tents available and heating systems and whatnot.
So they'll erect a tent and then take it down?
Yes.
Every Monday? Okay. That's what my question was. Okay.
Yeah. And then, Bill, roughly how long does it take to do the test itself?
So the, the swab test is only about, when they, when we did it with, out at CU South with Douglas County last time, they said they plan for five minutes per individual once they get to the testing station. So that's to get their information and actually conduct the test. So it's a pretty quick process. I, I assume that the antibody test is a little bit longer because that is a blood draw.
Yeah.
Bill, is there any medical verification of symptoms?
No. No. So this does not require a doctor's note, no, no referral from a, a medical provider.
Great. Anything else for Bill? I think it's great this building can be used for this purpose in its time. So that's great. Okay, so now, can you give us just a high-level overview?
Yeah, so, yeah, Seth asked me to talk to you a little bit about what's been going on this week with the Safer at Home order. So as everyone's aware, we are currently, in the current state of things, there are three different levels. Stay at home, safer at home, and protect our neighbors. So what they've decided to do is establish, within the Safer at Home, three different levels, going from the most restrictive, which is Level Three, to the least restrictive, which is Level One. So they've established six fairly quantifiable metrics to determine where a community potentially would lie based on hospitalizations, transmission rates, and testing. So pretty similar to the kind of things that I talked to you about, protect our neighbors. The state is currently accepting input until the 3rd of September, and then they're gonna review that input, go back with their team that developed this, which consisted of local officials, public health officials. So it sounds like it was a pretty cooperative event to get to this point. And then I, I would guess that we're probably looking at this going active somewhere around the 1st of October. So based on where, where Douglas County currently is, which is in a very good place with a lot of, a lot of weeks under our belt of moving in a very positive direction, we would definitely qualify for the Level One least restrictive category of Safer at Home. And, and I think, you know, Seth can probably provide more information, but that the county is probably looking at trying to move to protect our neighbors. The, two, there, there are some outstanding questions about exactly how this will be implemented. Supposedly, variances that are currently in effect will stay in effect. They, they said there would be some exceptions, but they weren't exactly sure what those were. The other question that was asked today was about face covering. So the current statewide face covering order would remain in effect for everyone that is in Safer at Home or, or Stay at Home. It would not apply to, to protect our neighbors. Now, having said that, the way I interpret that is that we would go back to where we were on 15 July, which was that face coverings were still required in, in many sectors, primarily for employees, and in some cases, for employees and patrons. But, you know, the 16 July mandatory statewide face covering, really, the, the significant part of that was requiring it for customers and patrons of critical businesses. So face coverings would still be a very much a part of our daily lives, even if we are in, protect our neighbors.
Okay. So there's still yet to be determined. They're accepting comment on this, but, but, Bill, when do you think we'll have a better sense? So do you think by the end of this week, we'll have a better sense of what the criteria will be, or are they gonna take the input and then come back to us another week or so with what the, what the rules will be?
I think we'll probably see another update in, in maybe, maybe the end of next week, or sometime in the middle of the fall into the next week, on what the input they received and what changes they incorporated into the order.
And will there be triggers to move backwards? Should, I guess the big concern is, as we get into winter months, people aren't able to be outside as much, indoor closed spaces. So will, does it address that?
Yeah, so the, part of the state's plan is to provide predictability and stability within the specific categories that a community is in. So it will be managed similar to how the variances are being managed now. So you fall out of compliance, you have two weeks to get back into compliance. So it will be no surprise if you are forced to go from Level One down to Level Two. You'll, you'll have at least two weeks' notice that you were trending in this direction anyway.
Okay.
And the other thing that Bill requested, and it sounds like the state's gonna do, is have a state map that shows sort of what level each county is in, because right now that's, it's.
It's kind of a free-for-all.
Yeah, it's a free-for-all. You have to almost go to the county website and triangulate between their health website and stuff. So you'll see a visual representation county by county of sort of where the dial is, which I think is.
That's great. Okay, good. All right. Any other questions for Bill? I'm sure we'll be bugging you.
Thanks, Seth.
Maybe it's just me. Thank you very much, Bill. All right. The, let's take a look at our consent agenda, which includes, let me get to the appropriate page, minutes from our August 18th, 2020 meeting, and claims for the period of August 10th through August 24th, 2020. Any questions on consent? No. Okay, seeing none. We are two minutes away from the appointed hour. That we, we do have an executive session, so we will convene our regular meeting at 6 o'clock. But we have, you have two minutes to do something. Seth, is there anything?
Yeah, can I just give two quick, a couple of quick event updates?
Yes.
So the staff here at the Art Center's got some really great ideas. We, we preserved just a very little bit of money in the budget for community events for fall and winter, I think about $10,000, and they've come up with some cool, scrappy ideas. So the first one is an Oktoberfest event here, or outside here at the Art Center, you know, probably partnering with Lone Tree Brewery, and, and have it be a ticketed event where you would reserve in advance, buy your ticket, and then come for one of two sessions. So there'd be like a session from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, or 1:00, maybe noon to 2:00, and then close down for an hour, and then a second session, just to kind of maximize the amount of people, because we're limited to 250 under current orders. Hopefully, that could go up a little bit before then. But, so I like that, that, you know, so you'll buy a ticket, you'll get a stein, you'll get coupons for two beers or, or two glasses of wine, and we'll have music, and, and just a nice way to energize the area. And then the second.
Indoor and outdoor?
Mostly outdoor.
Mostly.
I mean, the restrooms would be, we'd use the, similar to what Toons on the Terrace, where we use the, in the restrooms inside. And that's how the, the ticket flow would go. You'd actually come in, get scanned, go out the door that way, I think. And then, and then the second one is a pumpkin patch. We could do that either here, oh, and so that Oktoberfest would be October 10th, which is Saturday. And then the pumpkin patch idea was, is, is another thing that we could either do here, or we could do it at Schweiger. The benefits, doing it at Schweiger, obviously, that's where we've done fall festivals in the past. The benefits of doing it. The benefits of doing it here, I think there's two, because we would do that the next day on October 11th. Obviously, a much more family-focused type of thing. If, I believe we could, you know, reuse some of the same infrastructure from Oktoberfest. If we do it here, also, it helps activate, you know, the Arts Center again. So I think Schweiger will probably understand if we took a break from the fall this year and did a pumpkin patch. There again, you'd be able to reserve in advance. You'd actually get a time slot of when you could come, pick your pumpkins up, and have a photo op. We would do something where, you know, there'd be some kind of background where you could do photos and that sort of things, like what we did for Independence Day. So those are two. And then we also, we need to save a little bit of money for at least decorating the holiday tree, which is being scouted right now. And hopefully doing some sort of pop-up thing around that for the holidays. But more to come on that one. So any questions about?
No, great ideas.
And I am really excited. Again, I think it's important that we are using this space for community and having community events. So really happy and I fully support staff's kind of entrepreneurship and hustle.
Yeah, I appreciate that, too. We have a native of Germany to advise us on having a, she's on board.
There you go.
Thank you.
I think that's great. So, well, we all have that, we've all got August 10th in our calendars. I saw everybody pick them up. So I hope they reserve some of the Lone Tree Anniversary Brew.
That's a good question.
Yeah?
It's not all gone.
I know, that's what I said. I hope they reserve some. Okay. So, sorry, I'm adding one more thing to my calendar. Now, I think we have reached the appointed hour. So we will, I will open our regular meeting for the Lone Tree City Council. And we do have a quorum this evening. I'm going to ask our city attorney to state for the record why the reasons council will be convening an executive session.
Mayor and City Council, the executive session is pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, Section 2464024D and Article 4, Section 6 of your Home Rule Charter for matters involving the protection and security of city resources and medical security arrangements arising from the COVID-19 pandemic.
So moved.
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and we are now in executive session.
Is dinner here? I didn't see it. So I don't think dinner's quite set up yet. We could knock out the executive. Thank you.